Good evening. Thank you for watching the 2018 Fall Legislative Forum, sponsored by the Ashland Chamber of Commerce. I'm Mary Gardner. I work for SOU International Programs, and I'm the current president of the Ashland Chamber of Commerce. Moderating the discussion this evening with me is Marie Lang, owner of Ashland Homes Real Estate and past president of the Chamber. Tonight, we'll be introducing Tanya Graham and incumbent Mike Morris, who are running for City Council Position Number Two. Theo White, who is not here this evening, refused to sign the consent form, so he's not here this evening. Each election year, the Ashland Chamber hosts legislative forums. This year, we're also hosting forums for Ashland City Council Positions Three, Four, and Six. We're also doing the Parks Commission Positions Three, Four, and Five, State Senate District Three, State Rep District Five, Jackson County Sheriff, and Jackson County Commissioners Positions One and Three. All candidates were sent the questions prior to the forum. The forum tonight is being recorded and will air on local community television, the RV-TV website, and Ashland Chamber's website, along with additional election information at ashlandchamber.com. The Ashland Chamber has many, for many decades, has had a long relationship within the business sector and through effective community partnerships with SOU, the hospital, and OSF, and with the city of Ashland. We promote business and the opportunity and the community by providing business resources, creating events such as the Festival of Light and the Fourth of July, promote tourism, the economy, and improve the quality of life and serve as the welcome center for our city. Over 700 businesses are members of the Chamber, representing thousands of employees and jobs and hundreds of community volunteers, who are engaged citizens helping to make our community better every day. We believe in collaboration and effective relationships, which we hold dear. Tonight, after each candidate is introduced, they'll have a two-minute opening statement to discuss why they're running for their position and what skills and accomplishments qualify them to serve as an Oregon elected official. Following the opening remarks, candidates will be asked three questions with three minutes to respond. A bell will ring when the candidates have 30 seconds and then 10 seconds remaining. If there's time, they can give a two-minute closing statement, and they must adhere to the time restraint. Additionally, each candidate had to sign a consent form in order to participate. The Ashland Chamber is a private, nonprofit, mutually benefit association. We require that the candidates refrain from any form of speech that includes profanity, obscenity, hate, racism, or vulgarity, or that is insulting or offensive to any ethnic, religious, political, or other identifiable group or individual, as determined by the moderator. A violation of this rule will cause the candidate to be removed from the forum. We expect and will insist on respectful behavior. This is a forum, not a debate between candidates. If time allows, we'll have follow-up questions for the candidates, in which case candidates will have two minutes to respond, again using the bell system. Please note that the candidates' introductions were submitted by the candidate. So the two candidates, they've drawn, and as to who will go first and second, and Tanya will be going first with this evening. To give you a little background on her, Tanya Graham has lived in Ashland for more than 20 years. She's the executive director of the Geos Institute, where she helps communicate plan, communities plan for the impact of climate change, and supports the institute's forest and river programs. Tanya serves on the City of Ashland's Wildfire Mitigation Commission, and recently co-chaired the Bond Committee for the Ashland School District. Growing up in a town where small businesses struggled to succeed has taught her the importance of a strong local economy. Of the seven children she's raised in Ashland, six are grown and the youngest attends Ashland High School. Welcome, Tanya. And I'm going to turn this now over to Marie.
So, Tanya, this is your opportunity to let us know why you're running and briefly discuss your skills and accomplishments that qualify you to serve as an Ashland City Councilor.
Thank you. Well, first, thank you to the Ashland Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity to come before the people of Ashland and talk about these issues. It's a very important process that we're in. So, when I was about seven years old, my father, who worked at the local cement plant, was hanging out with his buddies after work one day complaining very loudly about the fact that our constable didn't do anything to enforce the law, and our justice of the peace never held court. And so one of his buddies clapped him on the back and said, "Well, Larry, if it bothers you this much, why don't you run for judge?" And he did, and he won, and they sent him off to judge school, and for the next 22 years, on Wednesday afternoons, he would open up the court and give people a place to bring their grievances and settle their disputes. And watching this as a child, my takeaway was that when my community had something and had a need, I was supposed to step forward and do my best to help. And for the last 10 years, I have been working with communities in Alaska, California, Oregon, Montana, to help them understand the impacts of climate change and respond to those. And in that process, I've learned how to help a community come together around really complex, difficult problems. And so when I see the issues that are up in front of the Ashland community right now, and I looked at my skill set, I decided that the best way that I could serve the community was to put my name forward for the Ashland City Council. As you mentioned, I've had, I've been involved with a number of community efforts, including volunteering at the schools and working on local conservation issues, and those relationships across the community, I believe, will keep me in good stead if the people of Ashland decide to elect me to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and, yeah.
And now I'll introduce Mike Morris. Michael is a sixth-generation Ashlander with over 160 years of family service to the community. He served 13 years on the Ashland Planning Commission and eight years on the Ashland City Council. He's made regional connections through the Rogue Valley Council of Governments Board and Southern Oregon Regional Economic Development Board. Michael is a mechanical engineer by education and trade, an analytical thinker who always preferred working with his hands, and a construction contractor in Ashland for the past 20 years. And he's the un-paw to four of the greatest grandkids, two of which attend Ashland grade schools. So thank you, Michael, for being here.
And once again, thank you to the Chamber and also to RV-TV for allowing this to happen. We get questions that we have 30 seconds to answer, and this gives us at least three minutes, which is a whole lot better than 30 seconds. So I'm running again for another term on the council, and what I'm finding is the council is pretty complex, and things move pretty slowly, and even though we've got quite a bit done, there's still a lot left to do. And just a few things we've accomplished, you know, the hospital, we're, you know, on edge of losing the hospital. We made a purchase agreement, made it work, and anyone that has elderly family or young kids, the hospital is a very important asset. And so it's in town, we've developed a major water plan, we're on the, working on the engineering for that right now to replace our water plant, which is basically from the '40s, and it's getting pretty tired, time to replace it, and we are working on that. We're also working on a wastewater plan, and we are trying to develop a method of meeting some of the new DEQ requirements without having to use mechanical chillers and other devices, which most communities use. We've worked at coming up with funding for street repairs. When you look at the citizen survey, that's one of the big issues, is our roads, they're in pretty bad shape. And that, we've adopted a Climate and Energy Action Plan to basically reduce our environmental impact, and we've hired a person to run that, and we're on the second phase of that. And we've adopted a 10-by-20 ordinance to be at 10% renewable in our energy use. And so I think we've done quite a bit.
Okay.
10 seconds.
I got 10 more seconds? Oh, okay. And I hope to come back and do even more.
Thank you.
All right. So we are going to start the first question with you, Mike, because you're next. So what are Ashland's strengths and how can we build upon them to foster economic validity?
So, when I first saw this question, Ashland's strengths to list in three minutes is nearly impossible, so I can pick a few. And first, I'd say the climate, second to none, as I see it. Second, we have like year-round outdoor recreation, and it's, you know, within minutes of downtown, we can do anything from, you know, skiing to fishing to birding to running, you know, hiking, my favorite. You can do all that. We have a great film industry that started up, we have a wine industry that's becoming renowned, theater, restaurants, parks, Southern Oregon University, their academics and their sports, our K-12 is known throughout the state. You know, we have our own water and electric, and we have our own high-speed internet network. We have things that no one else has. And, you know, there are another set of strengths that people overlook, and that's the strengths of the people that get involved, you know, Tanya, and Marie, and Mary. And, you know, we have a very involved, educated, active community, and a lot of communities don't have that. When someone comes to a council meeting from Central Point or Medford, they're amazed how many people show up. Everyone has a say, and everyone gets listened to, and we go through that. So I think that we have a great staff, we have a very active chamber, I think Peter Buckley called it the most proactive, and there was another term he used, progressive, twice, you know, that was there. So to build upon those, and the Chamber has done quite a bit of this, I would take the immense accommodations we have, tourism, economy, and everything. So we have restaurants, we have theaters, we have housing, we have all this, and expand the use of that in the winter. And we have everything from a film festival, chocolate festival, iron chef, Festival of Lights, we have all these activities, and I think we could do more. And I honestly think that would be something we would carry on until we can get to the point where we could diversify what the economy is. We will have to diversify in the future, but it takes time, and to use these resources, I think, benefits us all. It helps the people that work there, it helps the city, their budget is enhanced with some of the activities, and, you know, we have assets other communities can only dream of. And I think utilizing these, we can solve all the problems that we need. The interesting thing is, the more we come together, the more assets and strengths we end up with.
Thank you. So, Tanya, what are Ashland's strengths and how can we build upon them to foster economic vitality?
Much of what Mike was saying is what I have listed out as well. We live in a spectacular place. The natural beauty is stunning here, and when people come to visit me, that's the first thing, is how lucky you are to live in this place. And we're also located on the I-5 corridor, which helps not only in terms of commerce, but also we are able to see music and entertainment and arts and speakers that stop over on their way between Portland and San Francisco that we wouldn't normally get to see in a town of this size. And then certainly, the university is a major economic driver and an asset to the community, as is OSF. We have a very interesting sort of light industrial community as well, that many of those businesses are right on the cutting edge of their work nationally and potentially internationally. And I would agree also just that our biggest strength is our people, and people come here to Ashland intentionally, and they bring a variety of different experiences and perspectives and a willingness to innovate and take prudent risks when it makes sense to do so. And we can see from our parks and our schools and the services that we offer that the people of Ashland are willing to, they care about community, and they're willing to invest in it. And those characteristics make it, make it much more likely that this community can be resilient when it's up against the challenges that it has. And the work that I've done in communities across the West has helped me be able to identify some characteristics of communities that really can help them, because we know that our, Ashland is up against some very serious challenges, some of which have come on very quickly. And the way that we address those and the way that we build on that strength is to come together as a community in some very specific processes that can help to pull the resources together. As a citizen, it's important to me to know how I can help with this community with its larger issues, and I think that there's some leadership that we can call on from the city council to help align those resources and to help the community get clear on what it needs to do, not only to protect the community as a whole, but also to protect the business community, which we know is the foundation of any vibrant community. I know that from growing up in a place that really didn't have that. You really don't have very many options when your business community is struggling, and so we all have a vested interest in that, and I think we saw, we build on this by identifying our highest priority issues and then really working together to innovate and to support the businesses that are already here and help them continue to grow and prosper.
Thank you. I'm going to give you the next question. So please define how you see the role of a city councilor and what you think will be your biggest challenge.
So, when I think of the role of a city councilor, I see it in two sort of different spheres. The first is as it relates to city operations, and then the second one is community facing. And so in terms of city operations, the city councilor's role is to identify priorities and align resources and help direct the staff so that we have solid plans and the staff knows what it is that they need to do in order to serve the community in the best way. And those are issues around services, which is the bulk, it's really the bread and butter of what the city does, is provide services for local people. And so in that, in that role, the councilor's job is to make sure that we're using our resources in the best possible way and that we are doing the very best work we can to meet the needs of the citizens. And then when we turn to the community-facing space, what that looks like to me is really that the councilor is the bridge between the city operations and the larger community. And so it's also the accountability structure. So this is how, through the city councilor, is in many ways how local citizens express what their concerns are, where things might be not working as well as they could with city government, and then also their ideas for how we might improve those particular services. And it's in that community space where I think it's particularly important that we have our ear to the ground and really have a good communication with local folks so that we can tell when things start to bubble up. And it's also in that space where the city councilor and the council itself can really provide that additional leadership around specific challenges in the community that are not, it's not appropriate for the city to even try to solve these issues all by themselves, but the city can certainly convene the local leadership around these issues and help to bring in those more external resources, provide that backbone for that work to solve those problems. In terms of my particular challenge, it was a good question, particularly a good question. I am interested in a lot of things, and I tend to think there are a lot of things that are important, especially when I start to see the connections between issues in the community. And the thing that I think that I would have to pay the most attention to is just making sure that I don't overcommit into the deep work of some of these issues around the community, and I make sure that I stay available and accessible so that I'm not too busy for having those conversations in the community that are so vital to the job.
Thank you. So, Michael, please define how you see the role of a city councilor and what you think will be your biggest challenge.
Well, we could almost be reading off the same sheet. That's what it's kind of, right? Once again, so, you know, the role of the city councilor, there are several. And one is the facilitator, and, you know, as mentioned earlier, between the public and the hired city staff. I mean, we set the policies, but we are actually the interface between the two, and we do the outreach, we, you know, direct staff basically what we would like to see done, how we would prefer to fund it, schedules maybe. We don't micromanage or anything like that, we pretty much are the interface between the two, we also take the information the other way. Last night, we just added another software package to our budgeting so that eventually anyone can go on, you can look at, you know, everything, every line item in the budget, basically, what we spend on everything that we do. It's, you know, pretty much, you know, we're the in-between, between the hired staff and everyone else that's out there. And so the second part of that question, the biggest challenge, and that is the toughest part of this question. And what I've seen in the last several years, and it's something different than I've seen in Ashland before, we seem to have a fear of change and a resistance to change. Any problem we try to solve is going to require change. They're all very difficult, and I honestly think that that's the biggest challenge we need to overcome. And I think we can do that with adding, you know, more community meetings, more outreach. I think we can update the website even better, we've done it a couple, three times, and there's still room for improvement, and just meeting with people. I can't go to the hardware store in Lumber Yard, and I get cornered. People want to ask about everything you can imagine, and so I think that is the toughest thing we need to do, because, you know, if you're afraid of everything, you pretty much react, and we have the ability, we've seen it before, where we can basically see where we want to go and make the changes early enough that we can, we can get there, and we don't have to, you know, just be who we're dictated to be. We can create our own future and our own, and that's, I think, what we need to work on, so.
Thank you. Well, you're going to get the next question, so.
Okay.
Tell us the top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing.
Oh, well, they're all related, I think they all need to be solved, and I don't know if we can. I would say the regional effects of climate change and those effects on the economy, which is already mentioned, coming to terms with the city budget, that's going to be an issue that we have to deal with. And then creating an environment that I believe will achieve affordable houses in numbers that will be effective, you know. It's, all of these items, I think, are intertwined, and I think we have to work them all. I think, you know, it's, I had a friend years ago named Ken Hagan, who was on the council, and he never called it climate change, he called it, I actually had to write it down, global uncertainty, because he felt there would be everything you could imagine, from storms to drought to hot to cold, and it's pretty much what we're seeing. And there's not a lot we can do about it short-term, except adapt to it, become resilient, and I think that's something we have to do. We're doing some things through AFR and the CEAP program, but I think that's something we need to work on. The budget, we hear a lot about the budget, and to me, it's like golf, in that if you don't play it a lot, you're just out there in the weeds, you know, trying to find things. I'm not a golfer, as you can probably tell. And the budget comes around, and everyone's complaining, but the details are a lot of work. And, you know, we get demands on PERS, which gets set at the state level, and we have to deal with that. We have healthcare costs, which everyone has right now, we have to deal with. And we're taking steps and trying to find creative ways to get around that, and taking steps to change the healthcare plans a little bit, adding more employee costs, looking at coverage, adding fitness programs, everything, you know, along those lines. The affordable housing problem, we just had a meeting last night where we talked about adding density in certain areas of town, and it's something that we have not really tried before. We used to do bonuses and everything else, and we have never been able to make those work, but I think this might be one of the options if done correctly. We can, we can basically make a dent in housing and housing supply and, you know, basically house people that are now residing in Medford or Talander, Phoenix, so, thanks.
Thank you. Tanya, tell us the top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing.
I think at the highest level, the biggest issue is that we haven't decided as a community what are the most important issues for us. And because of that, when it comes time to allocate resources, it feels arbitrary to a lot of folks in the community, they're not quite sure how the budget lines up with what they feel is the most important thing. And so, and then it also keeps community members from being able to plug in and to kind of know where it is that they can help. And so the top issue, I think, is actually to prioritize the challenges that we're up against. But when it comes to actual issues, I tend to think of them in terms of a larger community resilience umbrella, and that is, what are those issues that if we don't address them adequately in the near term, could cause long-term, very difficult situations for us in the future? And when I think of it in those terms, the three that I would bring forward are certainly climate change, we're seeing the early signals, we know that there are going to be much more difficult situations ahead, that's just, that's what the climate scientists are telling us. And climate change impacts all sectors of a community pretty much at the same time, and so we, climate change needs to be at or near the top of our list, like it needs to be at or near the top of the list for communities across the country. Behind that is also this, the housing question, and I include homelessness in that, in that, in that list. We know that currently, right now, that people are under an incredible amount of strain as it relates to their housing situation, and these are our neighbors. Children are being, are being hurt by the fact that they don't have stable housing in our, in our community, and there's certainly things that we can do about that, but we need to prioritize that as a major issue. And then the third piece is, we need to really try to do our very best to figure out what we can do about this disruption that we're experiencing, certainly economically, but, you know, how to deal with the smoke and the very real fire danger. I know the Chamber has done a lot of work with smoke, it's been recognized at the state level, and we need to keep going, and the city needs to be helping the community deal with those three issues. And when we do that, we will put ourselves on a path towards real resilience that includes economic resilience, climate resilience, and also social resilience. And that is, that, I think, needs to be the goal of the community going forward.
Okay, you're going to get the last question. How do you intend to work collaboratively with the community partners such as the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, I think this also comes back to the question of where does the councilor do its work, right, this person's work? So when we think about the primary services that the city offers, there are a number of ways that the council can partner with the community and have those strong feedback loops and engage the community in determining the best way to provide those services, and that should just be a standard process that the community, that the city goes through and does. We have a lot of engagement around those sorts of issues, infrastructure and that type of thing. When we look at the bigger challenges, the more complex challenges that are not just the cities to carry, what I would like to see the city do is a community-driven strategic planning process that identifies our top three or four priorities, and then invests some of the city's resources into the process of essentially creating task forces and supporting those, and recognizing that we have a limited budget, we don't have unlimited resources. And so we have to figure out, how do we prioritize the resources that we do have so that they can be leveraged by the larger community? And so that process, I think, is a particularly important one. And then, and then at that task force level, really bringing in that community leadership, bringing in the resources that are available in the community. And we have some places that we can look to for examples for that. So Park City, Utah, has done a great job with a larger strategic planning process. So Park City, Utah, has done a great job with a larger strategic planning process. And then if we look to Walla Walla, Washington, they've done a deep dive on their Children's Resilience Initiative, which is really going after reducing the amount of trauma that children in that community experience. And they've done that by essentially bringing all of these different community partners together. And the great thing about Ashland is that we already have this structure and this ability to partner, and we see it in, clearly, in the partnership that the city has with the Chamber of Commerce for the business community. We also see it in the work that the city is doing with the faith community and social services advocates around a permanent homeless shelter and trying to get that established. And we need to expand that concept out further so that the city is involved not only in developing the strategy for addressing these issues, but then identifying what is the appropriate role of the city. And that role is often a thin slice, but it needs to be a role that we can take on within our budgetary constraints and that is appropriate in terms of developing partnerships across the community to support the rest of it.
Okay. Thank you. So, Michael, how do you intend to work collaboratively with the community partners such as the Chamber?
That's an interesting question. For, I don't know, since I've been back about 20 years, I've worked with the Chamber, like I said, the regional organizations, SORE, RV COG, and other community groups, whether it's the faith community, ORA, some others. And I think it is probably, it's an interesting dynamic because we have quite a few internal organizations. And to make that leap is something, I mean, we work with all of our commissions, transportation, planning, you know, airport. We have 20-some commissions or something like that. And they're the ones that reach out to the community in a lot of cases and come back with the programs that they want us to work on. The strategic planning is, I heard that term, and we had a very interesting time trying to get that done this year. It's pretty, I mean, we had city administrator, acting city administrator, another acting city administrator, and we're finally actually getting to where our staff's organized, that that's something that was on our goals and probably something we will get back to. But we actually, you know, I think currently, the council works fairly well, getting information into staff and everything else. We may lack a little bit getting it back out. We're working on those systems. But we'll just keep on trying to make it happen and figure out, you know, we can do some strategic planning, we can do some other things. We also have a organization that is basically set up in divisions, that we can coordinate our divisions to. But this is something that, you know, we've been working on and we'll have to continue working on since, I don't know, since time has began, so. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. So you each have two minutes for your closing statement. And, Mike, you're going to go first.
I get to go first?
Yes.
Well, what I think I bring to the council is a little more grounding in what we do. There's, we pass ordinances, regulations, rules. I look at them analytically, like, say, with an engineering background. I look at the numbers, I look at, do I feel it'll work? The other side of it is, as a contractor, I get to see at the ground level what we do, and if it's effective, if it's not effective, if we need to revisit it. And I think that's something that is a little rarer on our council than we usually see. My connections are with probably people that have to deal with everything we do, maybe more so than others. And I think that's the ability that I bring to the council.
Thank you.
So change is upon us, and we're seeing it in a variety of different ways. We're seeing it in higher temperatures, especially in the summer. We're seeing it in smoke. We're seeing it in drought. When water comes down in precipitation here, it's coming in sharper bursts. We are seeing a lot of changes there. We're seeing a number of changes in, just in the economic sector, in terms of retail and the impact that online retail has had on local businesses across the country, and certainly Ashland's no exception to that. And we're also seeing just macro changes in terms of automating and mechanization and that sort of thing in the larger economy. And the best way for us to deal with these issues is to be proactive about them. And I tend to think of it almost like a rafting trip. So for folks who've been fortunate enough to be on the Rogue or the Clamath or the Illinois, when you look down and you see rapids coming, or you hear them, whoever is in the captain's chair, if they're worth their salt, is getting paddles into the water. And they're doing that specifically because they know that if they can come into that rapid with some momentum, they can actually steer the boat. And they know that if they drift into it without momentum, that the river will take them where it will take them. And there are a lot of people ready to work. When I talk to folks around the community, they want to do something meaningful to help with these major challenges that we're up against. And I think part of our job is to make sure that we do the work so that they can plug in where they can against these very, very big situations that we're up against. And that's what I would like to bring to the council, is the ability to help with that strategic planning and that focus on priorities and aligning resources so that we can build resilience.
Thank you. Thank you both for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So thank you both for being here and taking the time to participate. It gives our viewers the opportunity to hear what your views are and your thought about your position that you're running for, and that's really important. And thank you, Marie, for moderating tonight.
You're welcome.
It's very helpful. So thank you to the citizens of Ashland for watching and getting informed about what the issues are and trying to get a better sense of who you would like to vote for. These forums can be, once again, watched on public TV, on public access, I guess, community TV, on the RV TV website and the Ashland Chambers website. And for more information about the election, ashlandchamber.com. So thank you again very much for watching tonight. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1673.58]